It's awful. It's just awful.
Let me tell you why they don't use it. You know why you can't use those things? Because you have to have a Harris County toll tag. If you don't have one, they send you a violation. I got stuck on one and couldn't get it. And, and...
Huh? You cannot use an NTTA thing in Houston?
We can.
No.
I've used them for years. And they always, and they always do it.
They sent me a violation. And I got an NTT tag. But they, and they'll tell you, we don't recognize the NTTA.
They're looking for you, Charlie. It's a consent.
And, and if you look, there's a sign that'll say, Harris County Toll Tag Only. That's what it says.
So what are you gonna do when they close, uh, the water and dry?
They're not, not where I'm at.
Did you see them over there working yesterday? They had so many...
It's just mainly the parks.
All the fire trucks.
Yeah, just mainly the parks. Okay. Yeah, you're gonna stay. Yeah, right, so. Yeah, they sent me a ticket. I called down and I said, "I got a toll tag." I said... No, how do you... As a matter of fact, I was down there Saturday. I was being very careful because they got a big sign that says, Harris County Toll Tag Only. Only in big bold letters. It's crazy.
Charlie, I don't understand.
I know, it's ten oh one. That's why I'm ready to start now. You know the rule. Don't start, you can start late, but don't start early.
Don't start early.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the Tuesday, March fourteenth, meeting of the City of Dennison Planning and Zoning Commission. And glad to have everybody with us this morning. And, uh, we are now following suit with council in the way we begin our meetings. So we're gonna stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance have implication. If you'd like to join us, please do. Ms. Linda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you bow with me? Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to come together, Lord, to, to seek to resolve business in our community. We thank you for the place that you've allowed us to live. And we ask that your blessings be upon this city and this meeting today. We give you the thanks and praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Okay, a little housekeeping for those that are not aware, and I think everybody is, but, uh, the planning commission is a recommending body. All of our cases, with the exception of plats and site plans, which our decision is final on, will be passed on to City Council for final approval on their meeting. Ms. York?
April third.
April third, there we go. Uh, we're gonna give you an opportunity, if there's a case on our agenda today that you'd like to speak on, we're gonna give you the opportunity to do that. Uh, we ask that when you come to the lectern that you would give us your name and address for the record. And I don't see any sense in imposing a three-minute time limit on anything. Maybe Phyllis and John. Maybe. All right, so let's move into, uh, our consent agenda. You wanna go ahead and read it? Or is there any reason to?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna take a motion on our minutes from our February twenty-eighth meeting. Any corrections, omissions, errors in that? Anybody find anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, you got a second? This will include the, uh, the final plat, lots one through eight, block A of Madrid Crossing Estate, items A and B. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, we had a second.
You have a second? Was you the second, too? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. All right, so... Oh, wait a minute, that, no, the...
Maybe you were looking at the minutes.
Oh, this...
You were looking at the minutes.
Oh, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at the minutes. That's what I'm sorry.
So it's just the minutes.
Yeah. It's been, I had a rough weekend. I'll give you a break.
He's still in Houston.
No, I'm not. Item four A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lot one dash R, block A, and one dash R, block B of the Dennison Industrial Park East Edition, section four replat, case number two thousand twenty-three dash zero two five RP.
All right, let the record reflect that Mr. Evans will be abstaining from this.
Can't do it, can't do it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, this is an aerial view of the subject property. Um, this is on Wayne Cabanist Drive with, uh, State Highway ninety-one to the west. That large structure just to the west of these lots, that is a quickset or spectrum brand. Um, and you have floorstone, um, to the north. This property is zoned light industrial. And this is, uh, the replat in question. Um, the applicant has requested this replat in order to sell off these lots, um, to an end user. Uh, I will say that, um, while we, we don't know who those end users are at this moment, um, there is a potential road that will be built between those two lots right there. That's why there's a fifty-foot, um, gap in between them. Um, it's possible that this property will have to come back before this commission for another replat if that road is built. Um, once there is an end user for these two lots, a site plan will, a formal site plan submitted will have to be, uh, provided to the planning staff. And that includes a landscaping plan and civils. And those will be staff-approved because this is in the light industrial zoning district. The ordinance does not require that site plan, uh, to come before the commission. Uh, the proposed replat, it does create two lots from a larger tract of land. Um, they do front on Wayne Cabanist, and they have access to water and sewer. Staff recommends approval of the replat as it's been presented. And I'm present for any questions you may have, and the applicant is not here.
Any questions? We'll close the public hearing and plan a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed replat.
I'll second.
I'll second. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Item four B?
Item four B, receive a report...
Mr. Evans has returned.
Sorry. Hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a city-initiated request to amend the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan of the City of Dennison, case number two thousand twenty-three dash zero one nine CP. Mr. John Webb?
Good morning, Chairman John. It's good to see you again. Appreciate your indulgence. I know we've looked at this information on a couple of occasions. I want to walk through it pretty quickly. Phyllis in our housing section really is probably, as you know, the, the majority of the changes. So appreciate the past work and comments that you've been providing to us. I think we're on a, on a good roadmap. Um, as you know, we've had several meetings to get, get to this. Again, appreciate the comments that you've given us as we prepared for the draft. Today's discussion topics, we'll talk about some of the past input that we've talked about before, the updated demographics, the housing, and then finally the next steps. Um, again, we posed some questions to you in the past. Again, I'm not gonna read these verbatim, but, you know, you gave us some comments about where the city is heading in the right direction, maybe some things that we could do differently. Uh, we talked about the likes and dislikes. Again, I know this is kind of old information, but we just wanted to be able to have this in for the record. Uh, we kind of talked about, you know, how big is too big? We got a lot of good feedback about, you know, some cities in the metroplex that you felt like we did not want to emulate. We understand the city's gonna grow as, as the demographics will reflect. So you gave us some really good feedback about some of the things that, you know, you'd like to see and maybe not like to see in the city. Um, as, as I've noted before, the population...
John, can you lift that mic up just a little bit? I'm having a little bit of trouble here.
Okay, excuse me, thank you. Um, as we've noted, you know, the city's gone through some fluctuating growth in the past, you know, with, uh, after World War Two and different economies and setbacks. And then it seems that we've now been on a period of fairly substantial growth in the city. Um, you know, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, we had a fairly slow growth rate. But just in the last three years, uh, we've had a three-point-two percent growth rate. Given what the information from our building inspection department, we believe the population of the city now stands at about twenty-six eight hundred. And I'm sure it's grown even more since that population estimate was done in January of two thousand twenty-three. We gave you two projections of, of growth. Uh, one, I think, is a fairly conservative, uh, growth rate of moderate growth. It still brings the city, you know, close to fifty thousand. As you were, there's some other opportunities in the west side of town that may bring in some major master plan developments. And with that, we believe the population of the city could easily exceed sixty-five thousand by the year two thousand fifty. Some of the demographic information that came out of the census was fairly eye-opening. We do have an older population in the city. That'll lead into Phyllis's discussion about opportunities for senior housing. Percentage of residents that have some type of disability, I think, will also need to be addressed as we look at other housing options for those residents. Again, uh, you know, we, we anticipate that there'll be quite an influx of newer, younger residents in the city. We will need to talk about, you know, how we're going to address the, the type of commercial uses that they will be seeking. It'll be a different type of population coming to the city, and they'll have different buying patterns than what you have in the city today. Then we'll turn it over to Phyllis and let her walk through the, some of the housing programs that we proposed in the conference of plan.
Good morning. One of the, uh, major reasons for undertaking this update was to look at housing policies since you, the city, is seeing a lot more interest from developers in, uh, building new subdivisions. Uh, there's also renewed interest in preserving existing neighborhoods and enhancing those. So a lot of the policies that we're recommending are focused on, on those two things. And like John, I'm not going to go through everything, uh, verbatim here because you've seen this presentation a couple of times. But if you do have questions about anything, please, uh, please stop me. I'm gonna focus mainly on our recommendations. Uh, the first is to create a, uh, subcategory of rural residential for the future land use map. And this would focus on those areas that, uh, are, uh, where it's unlikely there will ever be sanitary sewer services. And larger lots, more rural, uh, atmosphere may be appropriate in these areas. For strategies for new housing, uh, to support new housing of all types at a variety of price points attainable for all, for all residents. And this, I think, is kind of a good summary statement of, of the overall goal of, of these amendments to the housing policies. Also, at the same time, uh, the city, we're recommending they conduct a parallel effort to preserve and enhance existing neighborhoods. And that might include home repair and rehabilitation programs, uh, replacement and upgrading of infrastructure. Could be sidewalks. We, we know the city currently is undertaking a lot of, 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 uh, capital improvements programs to go back and essentially rebuild everything in, in certain areas, streets, utilities, sidewalks. Um, so that's one thing that we're recommending is to upgrade existing neighborhoods. But also start to develop neighborhood capacity through voluntary associations, neighborhood cleanup days, education on city services, neighborhood plans. This could be a wide variety of things to help build that neighborhood capacity and support, uh, from the current residents in these neighborhoods. In terms of new housing, uh, the goal is to support new housing of all types. Uh, and while the city has had a successful infill housing, uh, program in the past, we think there's some additional things that can be added to that to continue to boost the use of properties that have, uh, infrastructure in place. They've been planted for years in many cases. And it makes sense and is efficient to come back in and, and build on those properties. Some of these areas don't have infrastructure, and so that may be a way for the city to incentivize infill, continued infill housing construction. Uh, we're recommending to identify properties on side streets in downtown Dennison that may be appropriate for housing. And this means focusing on Main Street for your commercial and, and retail and restaurant, uh, and leasing those spaces for those uses. But then looking on the side streets to start to build the population that can support those commercial uses in downtown. Another, uh, topic that we've talked about is adding missing middle housing. And this is a way to, uh, start to address, uh, some of the affordability, attainability issues by incorporating garage apartments, duplexes, fourplexes in existing neighborhoods. There's opportunity certainly for garage apartments where you have alleys to access those and you can put parking. Uh, this has to be, uh, taken into consideration with, uh, can you do parking? And, and things like that by inserting these a little denser uses in, into existing single-family neighborhoods. And then also, we're recommending that the city support tax credit proposals and partnerships of nonprofit builders to provide both family and senior housing. And John mentioned senior housing is a particular focus, uh, for the city, given the demographics and the percentage, uh, of, uh, seniors that are, uh, currently living in the city. And, and there's more to come with the aging baby boomers, of which I'm one. Uh, so, um, but we think the city should, uh, expand and look at all options for senior housing. And, and a lot of this could focus on helping people stay in their current homes. Most seniors want to age in place. So that could involve repair and rehabilitation programs that are focused on seniors using some of, uh, the grant funding of, that the city currently receives, uh, for that purpose. Uh, again, supporting tax credit pro, projects for seniors. Uh, this is a, uh, has proven to be a very effective way to build senior housing. But also, senior housing encompasses independent living all the way up to skilled nursing. So looking at that entire range of senior housing is gonna be important for the city. For new development, you know, Dennison's at a point where you have an opportunity now to really start to, to shape how the, uh, vacant land, vacant areas in the city develop. And so you, it's kind of at a unique inflection point to do that. So we're, we've included some recommendations for new development of, in terms of creating neighborhoods instead of separate subdivisions and using streets and trails to connect these, uh, with a system of open space, whether it's public or private, uh, really looking at, uh, the design of subdivisions as developers bring those in. And, and trying to make sure that we just don't have scattered subdivisions that don't connect and, and you don't begin to create neighborhoods with, with that form of development. These neighborhoods should include a mix of single-family detached lots along with townhouses, patio homes, apartments are appropriate on the outskirts of neighborhoods where there are, where there's access to streets, uh, other amenities, schools. All of these things are needed for successful neighborhoods. As developers bring in projects, there's a need to coordinate with the Parks and Trails Master Plan so that, uh, the city is able to, uh, implement its goals as these properties develop, uh, to have public parks, trail systems, and then as well as looking at HOA, uh, maintained, uh, private open space areas. And then finally, uh, we end up with some recommendations and guidance for staff, commission, and city council when considering zoning requests for residential development of, of all types. And this, uh, could be the use of planned development zoning districts which the city's already using, uh, large master plan communities. The ordinances have already been amended, uh, to require, uh, larger developments to provide design guidelines, uh, that are administered by either the developer and HOA, not the city. But trying to improve the streetscape, uh, the appearance of, of subdivisions, uh, not duplicating houses, you know, every, every other house, but maybe every four houses, things like that that we think the city can do to improve, uh, the appearance of, and design of these neighborhoods. I spoke earlier about locating small lots, single-family development, townhouses, duplexes, uh, throughout the city as part of residential neighborhoods. They are appropriate for smaller infill sites as well. And then depending on the density, you may need to require some usable open space for these small lot developments. For multifamily, uh, they're appropriate in residential settings. They're not appropriate in the center of single-family neighborhoods, in non-residential and industrial areas, and then along freeways and tollways where you want to reserve that land for commercial, uh, and economic development uses. So we're making some recommendations on, for location of multifamily housing. It also includes, uh, not concentrating more than four hundred and fifty units in one area. So questions that the commission and council and staff, uh, might want to use when evaluating zoning cases? Is there adequate public infrastructure? Uh, will the post, uh, change be beneficial to the neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhoods? Does it reflect the vision of the comprehensive plan? Are there any negative impacts associated with the development? Will it contribute to the city's long-term economic well-being? And then, uh, does it support the city's sustainability goals? So that's a very quick overview of the policy recommendations that we're making for the housing, uh, sections of, of the comprehensive plan. We've also included a list of action items, uh, that the city can prioritize, again, based on staffing and, uh, fiscal resources. Uh, but just some, some things to consider, uh, to try to start implementing these recommended policies. And then, uh, next steps for the comprehensive, comprehensive plan updates. If the commission makes a formal recommendation today for approval, then the comprehensive plan updates will go to City Council on, uh, next Monday, April third, for their consideration and action. And then, uh, at that time, staff will go back and start prioritizing, uh, these action items and start the implementation process. And I am happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Any questions?
I've got one question. It seems like the plan is flexible enough that as time goes on, there would be room for more clarification within those categories. Is that correct? If we, if we recommend approval today and council does as well, then say, a year or two from now, from now, they see some changes that need to be clarified, that would be possible, wouldn't it?
Yes, I mean, your, your comprehensive plan is meant to be very general and broad.
A working plan.
Uh, but certainly, just as we're amending, uh, this document that was approved in two thousand eighteen, certainly, you know, once, when the city finds a need to amend these policies, always you can come back and do that. And you may find new development trends, uh, that are happening that you didn't anticipate. You may find that, uh, you know, you're seeing development in one area that you really need to focus in on and say, is this the right direction for the city? So certainly, uh, you know, you should come back and, and consider those things.
I've got another question that's really just a side issue interest. But it, it, we've got a population age of average, what did it say? Eighteen?
Eighteen percent is sixty-five or over.
So has that, it seems like that's lower than it used to be. It used to be like twenty-nine percent, wasn't it?
I, I don't know. John, did you...
I'm just curious to know.
It's, it's changing.
It's changing.
Our younger demographic is only, is on the rise.
Yeah.
And I, I think, uh, you, you will see that maybe even go down in the percentage of, of seniors, uh, given you've got, uh, new development occurring. Uh, you've got a lot of employment opportunities in the region that are gonna start attracting younger workers and younger families.
Younger people moving in. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
So it looks like it actually gone up here. Seventeen point two, two thousand ten to eighteen point one in two thousand twenty. Okay, uh, John, do you have anything? You're done?
Wow.
Well, uh, first of all, thank you, Phyllis and John, for the hard work you guys have put in on this. I think we have definitely improved some things in going into, uh, the future. So thank you all for everything you've done. We appreciate it. Um, I guess we are ready to make a motion and approve it.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. Oh, it's a public hearing. Okay. Oh, it is, yes. All right, is there anyone here to speak, uh, on behalf of this request?
Jonathan Earnhardt, one ten South Houston, Dennison, Texas. I think it's a wonderful plan. They've done a lot. They're going with what, uh, uh, we take a lot of classes nationwide, and they're really trending on this. Their neighborhood concepts are excellent, adding a mixture of housing and everything. Only concern I had was noted, it's the rental program. Most of y'all may have been aware, when we attempted the mandatory one last time, we had a big public uproar, you know? And we definitely let, read some case law on that, and the Supreme Court has ruled that unconstitutional. So I think putting that in our master plan is really just kind of discriminating, you know, against the rentals. It should be equal across the board if we're gonna do anything by homeowners and rentals. You know, the biggest problem is we haven't had enough code enforcement officer as it is. You can't get inspections as it is. We're having to sub it out. We've, we're hiring a, we're subcontracting inspections and everything. We're having major delays. You know, when a tenant moves out on the fir, they're moving out on the thirty-first, the new one moves in on the first. I mean, could, your timeline zero between that unless you're monthing it out or something different. So it's just a big cause of loss. I think it's just gonna be an extra headache and it, you wanna put a burden on people that are already less fortunate, harder time for them to get in to a rental unit 'cause that cost is obviously gonna be moved on to there. When we did the numbers last time, you know, by the balance of actual rental units they are versus homes and the ones that were getting the calls, you know, it was like the majority of homeowners were getting the calls for property standards, not the rental units. I mean, it's, it's a big difference. These rental units are being purchased, they're being remodeled. They're, they're great units. It's these people that are living in these older homes that's lived there for thirty years are really the, the eyesores and the problem. I mean, it's when we buy a house, they are trash. There's not one house we buy like that that doesn't go to, um, an investor that doesn't remodel and fix it. You know, it's the homeowners that let them sit there and rot for, for decades. Not everybody, but the majority of them. You know, it's a problem across the board, not for rentals. So to target an inspection program like that, there, I just see that as a, a big issue. And definitely, it was, I'm not sure how many people were here involved and saw that, but you couldn't even stand in here, out there. And it was definitely a lot of, a lot of issues. And we just know it's in there. I know it's not a, say, more implemented, but in the comprehensive plan, it's like meaning we're trying to get a goal towards that. The, the Supreme Court already ruled unconstitutional. So I just wanted to make that note. But other, other than that, I think it's a great plan. Thank you all.
Any questions from Mr. Earnhardt? Uh, Mary, do you have any idea how many, uh, code enforcement, uh, issues we have on substandard rental property?
Uh, I don't have code enforcement under my purview, so I can't speak to those numbers.
Okay. Do you want to address Mr. Earnhardt's comments as far as the rental?
I don't think that's appropriate at this point in time.
Anyone else here to speak?
I just have a question.
If you, if you could come up front, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Peggy Gardner, two seven zero five West Washington Street. And I haven't, I didn't hear anything about schools. And I know we're, right now, we're looking at possibly moving schools around and changing things up for schools. How will this type of neighborhood proposal, how will that factor into our schools? Are we gonna have neighborhood schools? Or could you guys look at perhaps putting the housing additions where, where there are existing schools? Or are you taking any of that into consideration where the conglomeration of children might be? For example, our neighborhood is mostly older people. So you could look at that and say, well, we don't necessarily need an elementary school next, in there. You know, so you don't have to have kids walking a long way or taking a bus. But anyway, that is something I think that should be considered about when you're making a neighborhood. Where are the schools that you're building for?
I think it's typically the schools follow the development. So wherever the development starts to go, then obviously we have, we have to address that.
Okay.
Do you want to address that, Phyllis?
Sure. Thank you.
There are recommendations in the updated plan for developers in the city to coordinate with the school district. So when you get in, excuse me, one of these large subdivisions, is there an opportunity for an elementary school, even a middle? is there an opportunity for an elementary school, even a middle school? Pardon me. The other thing we're recommending is that we look at sidewalks and really concentrating on safe walks to school, and getting kids safely, hopefully that they can, are close enough to walk to their elementary school.
I would also encourage you to get with someone at the school board to look at the new bond package that we're, that we're proposing, because there is new school development. Well, maybe Susan could address that.
I can, I was about to, yes. So Thursday night and every Thursday, if you'll get on the Dennison ISD website, this Thursday night, there is a bond informational at Terrill Elementary, and we've had a few already, Hyde Park and Lamar, I know, have done theirs. My school, B McDaniel, will be the last one, but every Thursday, I believe it's every Thursday sequential, they will have that informational in a PowerPoint, it's a really nice informational PowerPoint that'll give you a lot of your answers. And yes, they definitely look at the population growth, and they work with the city themselves as they're looking at a, a bond, and where we need to put those schools.
I'd like to give the stamp of approval on that. I went to the one at Hyde Park, and it was very, very interesting and helpful.
It is very helpful.
Very thorough, I mean, the, an input from the people that were involved in the process were there to answer any questions, and the financial questions, I mean, it's broad spectrum and very well done, so you'd enjoy it.
This particular Thursday just happens to be at Terrill? Just happens to be at Terrill, but it is on the website, the Dennison ISD website, it'll give you all of the dates and all of the places that they will be held, yes. The time, yes. Absolutely.
Anyone else here to speak, either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now we will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments for the two thousand eighteen Dennison comprehensive plan.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, none? We will send that on to the city council. Any staff updates?
I just have a couple. At the city council meeting on March twentieth, we had two items go before city council that the commission first saw, one was the rezone on East Texas, and then the CUP for the marine repair shop, both of those were approved, so.
Anything else?
I just wanted to let you know that the USDA public workshops are going to be, the first ones are the twentieth and twenty-first of April. I have the flyers ready to go, and you might be seeing those in the city newsletter, the school district is going to send them out as well, so just be looking for those for the public that's here. Those are public workshops, one of three that will be looking at housing recommendations for neighborhoods, existing housing, and it builds off of what John and Phyllis have done through the comprehensive plan updates, but we are a community that was selected by a firm out of Dallas to, to work on some planning and implementation steps over the next two years to help with some of those housing needs in existing neighborhoods. So the first public workshop will be Thursday, the twentieth, the second will be Friday, the twenty-first, and it will be the same thing at all of the workshops, we just wanted to offer multiple dates and times to try to get a lot of participation from the community. That's all.
All right, seeing no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at ten thirty-four AM.